Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, July 24th, 2018. Calling the town of Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting to order. First item of business, approval of the minutes. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes dated July 10, 2018.
I move that we approve the minutes of June 10, 2018, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Packing Center Inc., DBA Stop &amp; Shop. Application for a change of manager and a change of officers and directors. Do we have someone here for that? And we do. Gentlemen, good evening. You can sit there if it's more...
Over here.
Yeah, you can sit at the table. It's a little easier. All right, what do we got?
Good evening. My name is Eugene Richard. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Or are you counsel?
Good, good, thank you.
Good, good.
The applicant is Packaging Center Inc. That's the licensee. It's an affiliate of Stop &amp; Shop, so it's Packaging Center Inc., DBA Stop &amp; Shop. With me is Kevin Lee, who is the local manager. And two items are up today. There's some, call it, record-keeping, but the officers and directors have changed, and I can run through that in a second. And then, so there's an application to approve new officers and directors. And then, as well, there's an application to approve Mr. Lee as the store manager. So, the positions, the president is changing from Thomas Hippler to Mark McGowan. Treasurer is changing from Thomas Hippler to Dirk Jan Terhost. Secretary is changing from Stephen Rau to Marc Messier. And then, Mr. Hippler is leaving as a director. Mr. McGowan is staying as a director. And there'll be four new directors. The names are in the packet. So, we would ask that that be approved as a change of officers and directors. The second part of the app... What we're here for is, as I said, Mr. Lee is the man... We're asking for approval of Mr. Lee as the store manager. He's worked for Stop &amp; Shop for about 25 years in various capacities. He started in the union, and about halfway through had entered management. He has worked as various managers' assistants in departments. And for the last four years, has been a store manager, and recently has come into Hingham. So again, we would ask that you approve the officers and directors change, and then, Mr. Lee as well.
Questions from my colleagues.
Tom, all of the paperwork is in order?
It is.
Chief, you've reviewed...
Yeah.
Yep, all set. And Mr. Lee, has your... You've been with Stop &amp; Shop mainly in Hingham, or have you been in other locations as well?
I've been at various locations over 25 years.
Okay. And have you... And you're familiar with the alcohol sales policies and all of that sort of stuff?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like it's all in order.
I have a comment generally. I think you run a fine store down there.
Thank you.
I'm a customer there. Wife takes me out and do what she tells me. Although I will say, your vodka is priced a lot higher than other stores. And I spoke to the guy, and...
If you believe me when I tell you that I'm on it, I'm on it.
All right. Just telling you.
We should have voted first, just so that was not a condition of the vote.
It is a major topic of discussion.
Yeah, it should be. What up?
Not just vodka.
Yeah. Anyways, all right. Questions from the audience? Chief?
I'm all set.
Okay.
You might have a comment on the gin, not the vodka.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of Packaging Center Inc., DBA Stop &amp; Shop, for change of offices and directors to Mark McGowan, Steve Kinsel, Robert Jaeger, Dirk Jan Terhorst, Stacy Wiggins, and Marc Messier, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to put Mark... Mike Lee...
Kevin James Lee.
Kevin James Lee in as the Stop &amp; Shop manager for the Hingham Stop &amp; Shop on Lincoln Street.
I move that we approve the request of Packaging Center Inc., DBA Stop &amp; Shop, for a change of manager from Keith Royer to Kevin Lee, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Thank you.
Sorry, getting the tempo.
Yeah, okay. Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, but I didn't see that on the vote list.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best to you.
It'd be great if Stop &amp; Shop could come up with another woman on that director, officers, director roster, just saying.
Uh-huh. I will mention that as well.
Just saying.
We skipped by the public comment on May. Sorry, just want to get right to business. Anybody want to say anything that's not on the agenda? I don't see anybody. Okay.
Hey, this is the summer.
Application for a livery license, that's been postponed to August 7th by agreement, so that's off the agenda. Bear Cove Park Dog Leashing Look Back. Comments from my colleagues?
Well, I'll start and just say that in advance of this, and Tom, thank you very much. The board has received a number of different reports from various groups, including the police chief, the animal control officer. We've gotten some public feedback. We've gotten copies of incidents reports. And we've also heard from the Bear Cove Park Committee. So, you know, we said a year ago at this time that we would do a one-year look back, and that's what tonight is about. I would just want to thank all of the people who were involved in bringing this program to fruition, including but not limited to our town clerk, obviously our animal control officer, our now town administrator, members of the Bear Cove Park Committee, members of the Share Bear Cove Advocacy Group, who said after town meeting, "We're going to help you work on this to make it happen," which is appreciated. And I've also, you know, during the year, we've gotten correspondence from people. We've gotten correspondence about the park, and my impression is that, as the chief says in his note, overall, it has a positive effect. There have been a few incidences. The good news is, they have been reported, to the extent they've been able to be tracked down. They've been tracked down. I noticed in reading my materials that earlier this year, a $300 fine was issued to someone who did not follow the process, and they lost their privileges. So, I appreciate the enforcement efforts. And, you know, I don't see a need at this point to do anything different than what's in place. I think it's working.
I mean, that was certainly what I got from the written materials. I certainly would be interested in hearing comments from our animal control officer and members of Bear Cove Park, but, and, you know, Katie Sutton's here for Share Bear Cove. You know, I think we worked through it cooperatively, and, you know, it strikes me that the usage is generally in compliance with the expectations that the town and this body put forth after working, you know, with you all. So, I would tend to agree with Mary. I've, you know, talked to the town clerk's office from time to time to check in on the issuance of permits, and that seemed to be, you know, going smoothly in her office. So, you know, I think we... The wheels of government sort of turn slowly and a little messily along, but I think we've come up with a program where folks can continue to use the park, both on leash and off leash.
I get to take my son's dog on a walk in the morning, and he's crazy, so I'm not bringing him anywhere near Bear Cove Park. It's just easier. Does anybody want to say anything before we move on? I concur with my colleagues.
I did want to add something, you know, within the last few months...
Go ahead, Officer.
Just quickly, I wanted to add that in the last few months, other ACOs in towns have reached out to me because they're now interested in implementing the same type of permit process. So, I just wanted to let you all know that.
How do you, Leslie, now that you're sitting up there, like, how has it affected your role, your job, your hours? How is that...
Definitely a lot more work, because you have to be in there a lot more. You have to check in with everyone. But overall, I'm seeing a lot more people who are serious about walking their dogs, who are serious about rules, and who really genuinely love the park and want to keep it a place where they can have the off-leash, on-leash, but also know they're going to be safe.
Right.
Versus worrying about having a dogfight or someone getting hurt. And the best thing is seeing that it's becoming a park for everyone. It's not overrun anymore with dogs. It's so many different people are in there. It's still... It's hard for a lot of people to still accept because it's not overrun with dogs. There isn't so many people of just dogs there. There's so many different groups now that are starting to come back and come in, and it's really nice to see that.
I did note in one of the reports that there was a comment about maybe signage, simplifying the signage.
Yes. I think that would be great if we could finally get the signage now that we're a year in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A little more uniformed. It would make it easier for me enforcing and court-wise.
Okay.
And just to jump in, that was part of the policy. Part of the approach that we had taken was to get through the one-year look back and then to do some permanent signage, once we knew it was going to be a permanent program.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you.
And, you know, my hope as well, and I see somebody here from the Bear Cove Park Committee, but I also hope that what this means is that the Bear Cove Park Committee can focus on a lot of park business besides the issues of dogs. I get the sense that in a lot of your meetings going back, that the topic of dogs tended to dominate the conversation. And, you know, Bear Cove, especially in the summertime, you've got a lot of great events there and walks and runs. And this year, we were fortunate enough that Bear Cove hosted the high school rowing team in the spring season. So, all those different things take volunteer hours to put together. So, it's also my hope that for the committee members, your volunteer experience is a little bit more rewarding and more what you envisioned when you agreed to give your time to the town.
Yes, sir.
Sure, Fran. Sure, absolutely.
Fran Rocket from 21 West Morland Road, and I'm a member of the Bear Cove Park Committee. So, I would just like to say thank you to everybody for all the efforts of, as Karen mentioned, the wheels sometimes move slowly, messily, but I think it's working. In terms of the committee, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about it. We have talked about yoga and road... Excuse me. Road races and things along that line. So, there hasn't had to have been a lot of discussion on that. So, I just wanted to let you folks know that if... Because we weren't spending a lot of time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rocket.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Coyle.
Patty Coyle, Three Accord Lane. I just want to thank everybody, too, for the people who put up with, you know, getting this through here, because I voted against it, because I had 10 years of experience of people just not living up to, you know, following the rules. It is wonderful to be back in Bear Cove Park. I'm so happy. Thank you very much for your patience and kindness and good humor. And don't forget Kate Richardson, because she did an awesome...
Thank you.
Awesome little routine. Signing up for this? It's a piece of cake. And perhaps Wampe Tuck and the trustees in Nantasket Beach and all the other places who are irritated by those dog owners who don't behave well will be looking to Hingham to perhaps purchase them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
I would also just suggest that, you know, I know for a lot of interested citizens, there was always, you know, a little bit of uneasiness. And, you know, I might suggest to my colleagues that, to the extent that there are any incident reports or anything that would cause the town, or this board, or the Bear Cove Park Committee in any way to kind of question what's in place, that whatever body that is, we would most definitely reach out to, you know, the Bear Cove, you know, the kind of Bear Cove Advocacy Group. So, I think one thing that I take away from this is that any sort of changes that feel substantial to the people who use the park, we need to make sure that we inform people of issues and potential action so that nobody is surprised. So, I, you know...
Chief, I want to thank you and the department for the work that you've done there, Officer. I think we're going to move on to the next topic. Thank you. All right. The next topic is... I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Section 15 Gas Station Wine and Malts Beverages License for GMJ Group LLC until 7 August 2018.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hachio. Okay. Now, we've got some appointments. And ladies and gentlemen, as you know, customarily during this time of the year, the board votes to restaff the existing town committees with the volunteers that have stepped forward. And tonight, what I envision is a reappointment of people who've already been serving on these various committees, which you'll hear shortly. And they've all graciously agreed to continue serving in a volunteer capacity in the very important work that each of them does with their respective committee interest. So, on that, we can start with the Affordable Housing Trust. Would you like to lead?
Sure, I would love to do that.
Okay.
As the liaison member of that group, I would move that we reappoint Al Chambers. So, I move that we reappoint the following members to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30, 2020. And that would include Al Chambers, Anita Commerford, Nancy Kerber, and Britten Dubose.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Audit.
I'd make a motion that we reappoint Mike Dwyer to the Audit Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
I second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Bear Cove Park Committee.
I move that we... I move that we reappoint Edward Matthews to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Conservation Commission.
I'd make a motion that we reappoint John Mooney and Lori Freeman to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Counsel of Aging... Counsel on Aging, rather, excuse me.
I move that we reappoint Linda Hurley and Dawn Sibber to the Counsel on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Cultural Counsel.
I'd make a motion that we reappoint Leah Godfrey to the Cultural Counsel for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Fire Station Committee.
I move that...
Could we hold off on that one?
Sure.
I'm just...
Habit Development Committee.
Can I just ask a question? They continue until right... But the committee just continues until we either reappoint or reassign or whatever, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yep, got it.
I'm just aware that there's a member there who has asked for consideration to another town committee, and I'd just like to give that time.
Okay.
Habit Development.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Gerda Anderson to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
I think Ms. Anderson's done an excellent job. I agree. All's in favor?
Aye.
Historical Commission.
I move that we reappoint Signee McCullough and Jim Conroy... Where am I? For a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint David Ellison to the Lincoln Apartments Board of Managers for a three-year term ending 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
My favorite, the Memorial Bell Tower Committee.
You should do this one.
I recommend that we reappoint Kenneth Drescher, Joan Ghetto, Martha Ryan, Ann Sheen... Schillen, excuse me, yeah. Michael Schillen, and Dorcas Wagner to a one-year term ending June 30, 2019.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Scholarship Fund Committee.
I'd move that we reappoint John Fitzsimmons to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Shade Tree.
I'd make a motion that we reappoint James R. Hughes, Barbara Carduk, and Dorothy Manganero to the Shade Tree Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Great. We knocked down quite a few there.
Lot of new trees going in around town, too.
Yep, you know, the Shade Tree Committee shows a very important role.
Absolutely.
Not to be understated.
I agree with that.
Okay. We've got a one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to... Well, I'll just... I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Kevin Harris on behalf of Father Bill's in Main Spring for Food Fest 2018 to be held at the launch at Hingham Shipyard on Tuesday, July 31, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I'd just like to make a little plug for that. That's a major fundraiser for them. So, if you're around and can come out to the shipyard next Tuesday evening, I'll promise weather like tonight, so come on down. And there's a one-day liquor license.
The next item is a vote to proclaim Saturday, August 11, 2018, Farmer's Market Day in Hingham. And I would be happy to read that proclamation, if the board is so inclined to have me do so.
Love that.
Whereas His Excellency, Governor Charles D. Baker of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has proclaimed August 5 through 11, 2018, to be Massachusetts Farmer's Market Week. And whereas, farmers' markets are essential to the vitality of Massachusetts farms and are part of the cultural tradition of the Commonwealth, and whereas the Commonwealth is home of 242 summer/fall farmers' markets and 53 winter farmers' markets, which create a festive open-air setting, which enhances community spirit and civic pride by offering a natural place for community gathering. And whereas, over 150 farmers' markets participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as SNAP, thereby increasing access to fresh, healthy foods to all citizens of the Commonwealth. And whereas, farmers' markets help heighten public awareness of the agricultural diversity of Massachusetts and the benefits of buying local and preserving open space. And whereas, it is befitting for the citizens of Hingham to recognize the continued contribution of farmers' markets to local consumers, as well as their positive impact on the economy of the Commonwealth. And whereas, Hingham's tradition of its farmers' market now, in its 41st season, makes it the third oldest in the Commonwealth. Now therefore, we, the Hingham Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim August 11, 2018, to be Hingham Farmer's Market Day, and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Dated this 24th July, 2018, Paul Healy, Mary Power, Karen Johnson. And a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for the work down there.
I thought it was a lot of feeling in that. That was...
Now, I'm going to read a letter of disclosure. And this has similar echoes, but this is a letter that the board received from one of our citizens, an attorney who has volunteered his services to the town of Hingham. And he writes to us the following. This is a letter dated July 12, 2018. Dear Board, I write this letter with regard to the volunteer services that I am providing to the town of Hingham, and in particular, with regard to the town's analysis of the potential acquisition of the water company that controls the town's water system. Previously, I had been asked to join, and did join, the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee, which was established by the Town's Board of Selectmen and authorized by Town Meeting 2012. The committee analyzed the possibility of acquiring the interest of Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts in the water company that controls the Hingham's water system. On that question, I have been providing volunteer work through the committee and generally on behalf of the town. On December 4, 2017, Eversource Energy acquired Aquarian's interest as it applies to the control of Hingham's water system. I have come to learn that my firm, Holland and Knight, performs legal services for Eversource that are unconnected to the issues relevant to my volunteer work for the town. I have not, however, performed any work for Eversource. Nevertheless, I write to the board to make it and the town aware of the work being performed by my firm. To be clear, I have not and am not providing legal services to the town, and my law firm similarly does not provide and has not provided any legal services to the town. I also have no understanding of whether my volunteer work makes me a special municipal employee for purposes of that work, or that I indeed have any duty or obligation to disclose my firm's work at all. Nevertheless, in the interest of full disclosure, I wanted the board to be fully aware of the work being done by my firm. I ask that you read this letter at your next public meeting, so that the town as a whole is aware of the facts as set forth above. Thank you, Joshua. We have now done so.
So, it was Joshua Crumholtz.
Joshua Crumholtz, yes. And we're reaching that point in the meeting. We have reports. Assistant Town Administrator, anything to add?
No, thank you.
You're still here. That's good.
Keep showing up.
Town Administrator.
Thank God.
Just to let you all know that we received, and I believe it was in your files, but just to let everyone know, I guess, that we received a congratulatory letter from the governor's office on completing a cybersecurity assessment that was done last year with grant money received through the Community Compact Program initiated and run by Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito.
Okay. Anything else? Karen?
Yeah, I just... I don't know if folks are aware, I know some folks are, that there's a scholarship fund established in the memory of Christopher Orlando, a memorial scholarship fund that awards $2,000 on an annual basis to a high school senior. And, you know, folks have been very generous in contributing... Making contributions in Chris's honor, and his legacy lives on through the young men and women who receive that scholarship award. I just wanted to make you all aware of a pretty substantial contribution to that fund by Frank Jones. And, you know, I do so just to encourage all of us to continue to remember Chris, and I think it's just a really fine way to do so. So, to Mr. Jones, thank you, and to the Orlando family, we will not forget.
Mary?
I have two things. First of all, just to let both of you know, as we discussed when we talked about kind of the long-term financial planning for capital projects, I've reached out to the different boards and committees who are advancing large projects. And during this month, I'm going to the Harvard Development Committee, the Recreation Commission, and the School Committee to present the same information that was presented here. I'll be doing the same with the Country Club in early September. Bill Friend offered that I go next week, but that's the first meeting of the new executive director, and we thought we might, you know, not subject him to that on like his third day of work. So, as we move into the fall and thinking about budgets and budget priorities and warrant articles and things, the various groups that are advancing these projects will have the benefit of that information. The second thing, I'm going to pass out a copy, and Tom, I might add... The second thing, I'm going to pass out a copy, and Tom, I might ask if you could put it up on the board, and maybe Bob could display it. I just, so, yeah, I think everybody's familiar with Merrill Street down in Crow Point. And Merrill Street is 630 feet long, and Merrill Street has a two-inch water main, which I'm not, I'm not an engineering expert, but what I understand is that a two-inch water main is one of the smallest water mains that there are. And as we think about, that was probably put into Crow Point at a very early time when Crow Point was more of a seasonal neighborhood. According to our town engineer, prior to 2014, there were three leaks on that 630-foot-long piece of water main in 2005, 2009, and 2014. In conjunction with our road building program in 2016, there were many roads in Crow Point that were resurfaced, and Merrill Street was one of them in 2016. Our town engineer reaches out to, you know, to the various utilities to try to see if they would take advantage of installing new underground utilities at a time when that road is being resurfaced. It not only is efficient, but it also saves everybody money because the town is doing that. That road was resurfaced in 2016, and therefore, under the five-year moratorium, we shouldn't be opening it up until the spring of 2022. Last Wednesday, Hingham Town Offices received notification from Aquarian Water. We have a leak on Merrill Street. Crew is on their way. Two customers will be involved in the shutdown, and we will notify them by hand. More info to follow. The picture that you see up on the board, I took yesterday on Merrill Street. That road shouldn't have been opened up for five years. The quality of that road is now degraded because that dark area is where it's been cut into. I spoke with the town engineer to ask if there would be any sort of remediation that can happen because that road has now been compromised. Our tax dollars paid for that road, and those of us that are water customers have probably paid to fix those leaks four times. I bring this up as an illustration of some of the challenges that we have in making sure that our roads and the, we're trying to maintain our roads. And when situations like this happen, it's difficult. There are times when, there are times when this can be, when this happens unexpectedly. I think the leak history is an interesting thing, and while this is not an agenda item, because we received this email last week, I wanted to notify my colleagues of the history that we had with that road and show them a picture of what it now looks like.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to let the citizens of Hingham know that the road diet on Summer Street from the Rotary down on Mossy's Corner is about to be broken down. I believe it's this Thursday. We'll be studying the data that was generated as a result of this effort, and we anticipate reporting to the town, as well as to the towns of Hull and Cohasset, in short order. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience and cooperation with respect to that. You know, we've received some interesting feedback, spirited in some instances, but we're going to have the data, and we'll analyze it out. Finally, in behalf of the town of Hingham, I'd like to extend to the Chestner family our sincere sympathies and condolences. Officer murdered in the line of duty, not far from where we sit tonight. I'm gratified by the outpouring of support in the communities in the area that we all live in. I do think it highlights vividly just how dangerous this line of work is. I'd like to thank the Hingham Police Department for its professional and prompt response to assist our sister community. That was a real hard day, so, you know, just stay safe out there. Anyways, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night.